I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open the meeting just to kind of, not that there's a large crowd here, but give a little idea of how I am planning on it going. It's going to start with opening up for our host community agreement applicant, Hi-Hawk Farm LLC. We'll give them some time to present what they're proposing to do up on their site on Don't Road. After that, we'd like them to be able to go through the whole presentation and then after that, we will go back to public comments and questions. So if you need, just ask, we can find some paper, pen, if you needed to just make notes along the way so you can remember any questions you might want to ask. But I'd like to get through the whole presentation before we start questions and then we can get back to it and we'll open the floor for questions. With that said, I would like to introduce Ron Higgins.
We all know each other, yeah?
Representing Hi-Hawk Farm LLC and you and Chris Higgins, I believe, maybe go ahead and do your presentation.
All right, good, yeah. Chris will do the presentation. He's done a lot of work to pull it all together, so we'll show you what we got.
So I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation here and I gave the handouts to you, which as we get into this, you'll see why did that make it a little bit easier than trying to put it all up here on screen. So we'll start with that. So we're looking to move forward with a cannabis cultivation license and in order to do that, we have some public care so that we can get a post-community agreement and then hopefully go on to get a CCC license, Cannabis Control Commission License. In this presentation, this proposal, in accordance with the Massachusetts CCC, this is an opportunity to explain and provide information about the potential impacts in the neighborhood, the community for Hi-Hawk's proposed marijuana establishment, but not limited to you. So we're going to review the 2019 hemp production that took place at this location. Not sure if everybody knew that, but we did grow, or my father and my sister and her husband grew about two acres of hemp there, over 4,000 plants. So we kind of did this this year. Hemp plants are pretty much the same plant as a marijuana plant. The only difference being marijuana plant has THC in it and hemp plant has less than, you hope has less than 0.3% THC in it. So we did that this year and we felt, or they felt, and I kind of got involved at the end here, is if we could do that, we can go, can we explore growing marijuana? So here we are. We're going to review the proposed sculpt type and location of marijuana establishment. We're going to review some local zoning and bylaws that impact the marijuana establishment, which is what this handout is for. We're also going to talk about some security requirements set forth by N35 CMR 500. And we're going to talk about steps to be taken to prevent diversion to minors. And we're going to talk about steps to be taken to ensure no nuisance to the community. And at the end, we're going to talk about what we have ideas for a positive community impact and looking for input from that. So the location of this, where it's located in Barry, you'll see Barry Center is right here. This rectangle, the orange rectangle that's blown up into that area has given you where Don't Road is in town. After the meetings, I brought two maps with us. You can take a look at that. You'll see this is the assessor's map blown up and the little red rectangle that's on there is where our proposed location is. And then the assessor's map on the left, there's the entire town and we'll see the little red speck down on the left. Again, a blow up of that, you'll see our red proposed marijuana establishment right there. If you look at this picture here, you'll see where we grew hemp this year, the fields that were used to grow that. Here's some pictures of what that entailed. Liam, my sister's husband, he's the, I guess, the farmer in the family, been doing it for 15 years. He's got quite the resume in it. This is what he was able to pull up. There's a picture of some of the plants, some trimming of it at the end of harvest. Cut it down, put it into those boxes, put it in the back of the box truck to get to a processor, turn it to that CBD a little bit there. The processing of the hemp is a little bit different than what we will be doing with the marijuana. Marijuana is more regulated. It's going to be in a fence, in a secure area and then sold to, we'll be wholesaling it to some sort of retailer. Bottom right-hand picture right here is what the field looks like afterwards. These guys are there with the tractor, plowed it up and put back, put some sort of cover crop down, which has already started to sprout up. So throughout this hemp production, obviously Liam being in the farming business for 15 years, he knows all the best practices, adhered to them. We've got a great crop out of it. Final product, I talked about the CBD enriched extract, that was the goal of that. We're starting to see that and hear about it more and more often, a lot of gas stations have CBD products in the mail. Ron Kelski from the Patriots is certainly got his hand in it. So our marijuana establishment, basically with the experience that we gained from the CBD rich hemp, will be hopefully able to generate some THC-rich marijuana. Again, that picture of where we did it and the picture of where the hemp was grown. This is our proposed location on the property. You can kind of see what we envisioning where this is going to go. There are two lower fields that were down here that we used that we're going to, basically we have to put a fence around this entire area. We're going to need a greenhouse of some sort, we want to put that up. There has to be secured storage after we cut down the plants and we trim them and get all the buds and put them into some sort of plastic totes. We want to make sure they don't disappear, so we have to have secured storage on site. Locked storage with security cameras inside and outside of it. Entire fenced-in area to meet all of the CCC requirements. Has to have video surveillance on the inside of the fence, the outside of the fence, basically a four-knox. So this is our proposed area to do that. There is some tree removal that needs to happen, which I'll discuss later. There's not much, basically, it's, well, we'll get into that later. If you refer to what I have handed out here, I want to talk about some of the local zoning bylaws. Basically, I took, I copied and pasted what was passed at the 2019 town meeting and kind of put in red writing what our responses or how we're going to meet those requirements on here. Basically, what you read up here is straight off of the papers that you have. If you'd like, we can go through these quick. The visual impact, the visual impact, there's really no way to see this from a public place, from a public road. It is kind of almost down in the valley. There's, you've got to be in the air to see it. The next one, one of the requirements or stipulations is having our residentially zoned land. That's where we're at, we need that requirement. Minimum lot size of 20 acres, we've got 115 acres, more than we need that. The forested part of the property is under Chapter 61. The fields that you see are not under Chapter 61, so there's no, no problems there. It's one continuous parcel. Minimum road frontage, we've got plenty of road frontage. More than 60% of the area, we're only using 2% of the 115 acres. Residential dwelling, there is a residential dwelling on there where my sister Lindsay and Liam live. The next one, eight setbacks. So the setbacks, there's, we're going to be wanting to work with the planning board and the flooding landowner to get as close as we can, which is to the property line. Three sides of the proposed facility are well within the setback requirements. The fourth side, which I'll go back to this, which would be that line going that way. That's encroaching on her property, but we need to, we'll be checking with her and also working with the planning board to do that. Tree removal, there is some tree removal that needs to be taken down, I talked about that. We need some better lighting for the crop. Also, some of the trees need to be taken down for security concerns. We don't want anybody to climb a tree and jump on the fence and some of it's just little dead trees that have got to go. Access to the facility, requirement being only one way in. The one Don't Road is a dead-end road that turns on the driveway, so there's only one way in. Right now, no below-grade foundations or structures shall be used without the specific approval of the planning board. Right now, we're looking at greenhouse. We don't really have a need for a below-grade foundation at this point in time, so we need that criteria. Then the, no material from the topsoil being removed. We don't really want to remove it because we're doing an outdoor growling, we need to grow it. There will be a little bit of site work that needs to happen for the greenhouse, just to get it flat, but again, not for leaving the site. Discussion on the security, so security and the things, the N35 CMR 500 dot 110 provides guidance for the security requirements for marijuana establishments. Basically, in order to gain a license from the CCC, we need to meet or exceed those requirements, so we need to get there with the fencing and the security cameras. In Chapter 64 of the Town of Barry, local licensing requirements, it clearly states what security measures are in order to obtain that license from the Town of Barry. Hi-Hawk Farm, plans to work in, handles life board, fire department, police department, to achieve a clearly defined security and safety plan. You guys aren't going to give us a license, I don't think, until we do everything that you say we need to do. So it's clearly written in Chapter 64 what it's there. Chapter 140 dash 11.2 of the zoning code clearly states, this is the planning board part of the bylaw. Has some requirements and again, we'll be working with them to come up with an agreed upon security and safety plan. Some of those items needed to achieve that, but are not limited to, I talked about it. We need a security fence around the entire proposed grow site. We need to have security cameras with 24-hour day coverage and at least 90 days of recorded footage available for police review. That's a CCC requirement. Proper signage, signage whatever is required by the CCC and the Barry boards. Secured storage, I talked about that for the processed product. And also, we need to have some sort of security alarm system if somebody were to unauthorized entry into this. So the final thing here is, there has to be for the CCC license applications, positive impact plan. All of the CCC applications that I've reviewed and seen, I haven't seen all of them, but they all seem to have three blind items, three bullet items. So we've kind of thrown out some ideas here tonight and they're, you know, certainly looking for maybe some input. But some of those things that we're thinking, hiring of local contractors, you know, there's some site work that needs to be done. There's fencing, security cameras, whatever we need. Obviously, we're, we're a Barry business and certainly know a lot of people. Whatever we can do to support the community, we plan on doing. Also hiring of local workers, there's going to be some staff needs for this. It's kind of labor intensive when it gets to harvest time. And we're working with my sister, you know, she's got plenty of female friends that are interested and who's involved. Veterans, minorities, people with disabilities, obviously I'm in a wheelchair, this is going to be somewhat handicap accessible because I'm planning on getting out there. Provides mentoring opportunities for becoming cannabis professional. That was something I pulled from some other applicants' CCC agreements. It's certainly going to be a bigger business here, not only in the marijuana end of things, but the hemp thing as well. And we've got Liam, that's a 15-year farmer, what can he help others learn? Another thing, just farming in general, providing mentoring services to locals who want to learn about farming. Again, Liam, he taught at Mount Hermon Private School. He ran the farming program there and he's been in the Stockford School of Agriculture. He's been to UMass for soil plant, I think his resume is here somewhere. Plant Soil Sciences, he's definitely got a pretty strong background in farming, so certainly willing to share it with the community. Because I'm sure somebody else may want to jump into either hemp or marijuana or vegetables. That's what he does, his day job is raising vegetables in summerland in the valley. And then also, you know, this is, once a year, we plan to, you know, look upon this positive impact plan and, you know, what worked, what didn't work. Is there some other ideas, some other avenue that we could go with this based on input from the community? Something that we're looking for ideas. So that kind of covers my presentation and I hope, I kind of hope I touched on anything that I thought would be a question or I think that somebody coming to this would want to know about. If you want those, any other questions?
So we'll open the floor to questions. Does anybody in the audience here have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Doug.
Under the agreement, it talks about annual payments to Barry in the amount of 3% maximum allowed by the state regulation. Is that the community impact fee that we talk about in the host community agreement?
Yes, because they're a wholesaler, not a retailer. So that's all we're allowed to ask, is that impact fee. That's my understanding.
In the front part, the first part of the agreement, we also talk about community impact fees in accordance with the state law, but it says, "In order to address any reasonable cost imposed by Barry, imposed upon Barry by the facility." So my question was, is there, is there going to be an analysis of that or we're just saying it's 3% and that's going to cover the impact fees?
My understanding right now is Barry needs to... properly identify how the revenues are spent, because there has been no defined system or process yet to determine what's considered reasonable. So, in the event that someone asks us, or sets up, or questions, or we need to be able to show them where we're putting that revenue, and why we believe that's assisting with the impact of the community. So, right now, from my understanding, there's nothing from the state or even other develop, potential developers that has crossed any of, what's at my desk, or my view, and my readings, and my research, that explains how that's gonna be determined or defined. It's, what I think it was, is there was no limit to start with. Some developers thought certain towns were pretty much just making up whatever number they wanted, and so developers went back to CCC, and that's why they came up with the three percent, because they believed that the three percent might be considered the maximum and needed to address an impact to a community. And so, that's how the state, I believe, through their initial investigation, determined, alright, three percent, that's considered reasonable. So, right now, I think the, the state's position is, three percent is reasonable. And they're not setting it up, there's nothing in the law right now that says the municipality has to prove that. But we also know that things can change at any moment, so we have discussed how we would accept those revenues, so that accounting can actually say, this money came in here, and it was distributed to here based on approved budgets, et cetera. So, we are planning on tracking that, just so that if, in the event, someone brings that up, we have the ability to explain why, how we spent the money. Sam?
You're speaking about how you spend the money. Who speaks about how the town receives the money?
It's written into the community agreement. Certain timelines are set up where it's pretty much, especially with outdoor grow, because it's not a year round thing, they have to get through the whole season before they're gonna know how much they actually sold, and what the value of the wholesale sales are, to then provide that three percent payment to us. So, if I'm correct in here, was it fourteen months, eighteen months after you opened would be the first payment? So, in other words, they gotta get through the first year, here's what it is, finalize all their transactions, and then they make a payment to the town, given a certain latitude, but I don't recall the exact number of months it was listed in here.
No later than four months after the submission of each annual payment, High Hawk Farm shall submit to Barry certification from an independent honor of the most recent annual payment. Well, that's not the right answer. The initial payment shall be due on the first day of the fourteenth month, following the date that High Hawk Farm commences the operation of the facility, in accordance with its final license from the state of thirties. So, once you have a final license, you've got, the payment to the town is due by the fourteenth month. Fourteen months later, after the grow season.
For what reason is this person, this business, paying the town? The business is giving money to the town because the town was nice enough to give it its license?
No, there's, there's, there's a variety of reasons, but one of the reasons could be potential maintaining the infrastructure, 'cause it's likely going to increase a certain amount of traffic on public roads, leading to that part of the neighborhood. So, some of the funds will help with that.
By the way, I'm not complaining.
No, I'm trying to answer your question, I'm, it's, I don't take it as a complaint.
Why the CCC decided that a private business needs to pay money to the town?
I would, I would stab a guess at it and say that simply, a lot of towns don't want marijuana, and obviously, given the difficulty we had getting bylaws approved, and I'll split this town is on it. Seeing some tax money, something can be needed for the town, silences some people, and sees there's something in it for them. In other words, you have to appease some people, 'cause a lot of places don't want marijuana, a lot of towns have voted down not allow, period. So, my perception is the government's trying to create some benefit for these towns that allow. Obviously, the government's getting quite a bit of tax out of it on their end when they sell it, but the state's taking a, a good portion. But I think they're trying to encourage communities to, to permit it and to have these grows. They've gotta give them something back, or they just don't wanna deal with it. The potential, the potential for theft, for, for issues, for, you know, large farms and traffic like Lester saw when they have their sale facilities, the potentials that can really impact the town in negative manners are really there. And this is, I think it's a way to entice towns to agree to it.
I would say that, and another reason in is the fact that the whole concept of legalized marijuana retail sales in Massachusetts brought up a lot of people's perspective that it's going to create a negative impact to their community. So, some people brought up the fact that these impact fees can actually be used for education, so you can make sure, you can do programs at schools or whatever, so that people under the age of twenty-one understand marijuana's not for them. You're not ready for it, if you're gonna try it, you get to that point in life, you can try it, but let's educate you on what we know about it today, so you understand what that choice will be when the day comes. The potential, and this depends on the type of community, it may not be as such an impact on Barry as it might be for Worcester, or some other larger communities. But I think they also thought an increased sale and use of marijuana could require an increased public safety response. So, there will be a bigger burden on their public safety. I think that was some of the arguments that were presented that justified the three percent impact. Not saying that it's valid or not, but I believe those are some of the things that were put on the table that CCC had to listen to, and as part of their negotiation of figuring out this right balance said, okay, three percent impact, because I can't say you're wrong.
There's no doubt they had issues in Colorado. I mean, the initial extractions of THC oils were done with butane, butane gas and high temperature and pressure, and they had explosions and fires, and that's not done with CO2. But there were, you know, fire risks and explosion risks and theft risks, that, that, that's all gone on out there, and they were the big experimental grounds. But I'm, I'm sure that has some impact on why they said there's probably gonna be some community impact. I'm sure that's why they phrase it that way.
So, that's, exactly, I think there are multiple layers to the reasons why an impact fee was required in the host community agreement. Let's take that back, it's not required, a town can say, that's fine, I appreciate it, but I don't need it. Most towns' selectmen might not get reelected if they said, I could receive some money, and I'm gonna say no. I'm just being honest, it's, because there are unknowns, we don't really know, because we haven't quite had any facility go into complete operation yet. So, we're gonna have to find out what that impact is, and that's also why a host community agreement, I believe, is limited to five years. You should know that impact and know how to spend your money accordingly at that point. And if done appropriately, that money can be spent towards anything that you would need, and technically, you should not plan on relying on future impact fees after the fifth year. There's nothing in here that prevents extensions, as far as I understand, the CCC didn't even look that far into writing the law. So, it doesn't say that it does or doesn't have to be renewed. So, I'm saying right now, until we know better, we have to assume we've got five years of income on this, and then our local revenue stops on the impact fee for the wholesale sites. If it was retail, would you get the three percent forever, once they're there? That's how that's written, it's not part of the host community agreement. That's the, the bylaw that we approved that incorporated the Mass General Law saying we accept the three percent tax on retail. But for the three host community agreements that have come to the board for review, they're all wholesale. So, all we can look at and currently assume as potential revenue is five years for each, at the rates that are included in that. Right now, the rates are based on three percent, not a flat fee. So, the more prosperous these businesses are, the more revenue we get. So, that's the best answer I have on your questions at the moment. I don't know if you have one, add anything into that, Dylan? You have any more? Any further questions from anybody out there? Yes, Doug?
Question, item number five, security under the agreement. It talks about working with the town of Barry, public safety officials, and the police and fire. The cannabis, the, the regulation, the state regulation requires that you submit a security plan to the Cannabis Control Commission. And in the, the bylaw, the zoning bylaw, we just, we asked for a copy of that. So, I don't know if that may be something you wanna put in here. It says, it says in the front that complied with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, and maybe that covers it well enough, 'cause it does require that a, that a security plan be submitted to the, to the Cannabis Control Commission.
I think it's one of those things, from my perspective, we would request to include it, except that it is now written into the bylaw. Since it's in the bylaw, they have to do it anyway, or you won't give them the permit, or we won't give them a license. So, they'll, they'll spend a lot of money to get to a point where they just stop, because they don't give you the security. So, that's my, why I wouldn't necessarily press it into this one.
We didn't detail it too much in previous agreements, because it is governed by the state pretty strictly, what is required for security. So, we didn't feel a need back then to get into that end of it in greater detail, other than adopting the state's rules on it, so.
Good question, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I have another question. Out of ten of the, of the agreement, real estate taxes, it's just for my own use, what, what, what kind of tax classification will be used for this? Will it be farming, or?
Industrial, shouldn't it?
It's, it doesn't get the sixty-one A exemption, so I'm not sure how the assessors classify a farm that isn't under sixty-one A. So, I think they're probably gonna go to it and treat it as probably more like a commercial facility, so it'll be based on the structures built, and the value of the structures, is my understanding.
I believe the, all the marijuana production is considered industrial for this, for the, for the CCC.
Okay, so it might be an industrial, but I think they're looking at the buildings, the security fence, I think the, what you would consider nontemporary structures. And so, it'll increase their current property value based on what they build there, and then that just, I don't think they're allowed any exemptions, but I also don't think they're required to pay more. But it's a good question, and maybe that's something we should follow up at the assessor's office anyway, so I can know the answer the next time it's asked.
Do you have any specific plans for?
I think that's more likely, because we don't have a split tax rate, so it's all, it's all at the same rate, so it'll be just the regular, it'll be taxed based on the value within the personal property value of the, of the, whatever's built on it, so the greenhouses and security.
I just don't know how assessors value industrial property versus residential property.
I think it's the personal property value is what fact, is what that.
We usually set the rates the same, so it really doesn't matter anyways, so.
No, what matters, it's not the rate, it's how do they actual value what they put on the site. And I don't know enough about how assessing is done, so that's a question that probably is good to just, if we could follow up with the assessor's office, just so they can kinda we gotta, what, when is that? The eighteenth? So, on November eighteenth, the assessors are coming to present their proposed tax rate. And at that time, we can ask again how they would value this type of development. So, we can better answer that in the future, so next, two Mondays from now, we probably will have a more clear answer for you.
Well, the reason I ask is that, that came up when we had our public hearings about the marijuana bylaw. There were questions about taxation, and some people raised an issue then, that I didn't know about, and they said, well, the state has said that the cultivation of marijuana is not farming. And they asked us, they said, what does that mean? And we sat there looking at them going, we don't know. You know, we had no idea what that, they were asking about taxing, and, and we said, well, we don't know what that means.
I think they call it industrial, because they can't tax farming. As simple as that, but.
So, that's, that's why I asked. I still don't know the answer.
And I'm with you, so we'll bring it back to the assessor and see what their plans are until the state tells them different, 'cause I'm sure who knows, it could end up being very much like solar was, where it's, they start one way, and all of a sudden, the state says, oh, you better look at this a different way, because the entire state of developers said, we don't like what you're doing. And all of a sudden, it became, from real property, it became personal equipment, or whatever you call it. And so, it changed the way it values over time. So, yeah, we'll follow up with the assessor's office, try to have a better answer in a couple of weeks.
Unless they have a pilot agreement.
Well, that's solar.
No, but unless a business, I consider this a day business, unless a pilot agreement is established. But my question is that these official funds come either from solar or from cannabis?
Okay, we won't talk about solar, but okay, for cannabis.
Cannabis, or whatever. Do they generally go into the general fund, or do they get allocated for different uses?
They go into the general fund, but accounting wise, we will be depositing them into a certain account num, line item, so that we can say, that's our marijuana revenue, and then we will redistribute to other accounts based on the finance committee and the town's approved budget. But it's generally just, it's just the general fund. And how do we choose to use it? But in order to show where it got used, accounting wise, behind the scenes, we've actually gotta set the account, say, we received this much money, and we moved it to DPW's account, or police department's account, or an account that sets up some type of educational service, or we give to certain nonprofits that do the education, whatever we're legally allowed. I'm making up stuff, because I just don't, we're not there yet. But I'm just explaining, it, it becomes more of a, a line item in the accounting ledger, more than it is, is it enterprise fund, or a reserve account, or it, it's a, just a general fund revenue. Did you have a question now?
Yeah, I have a few of them, actually. Firstly, what, how does the process go from here? What, what is the timeline on this, and how does it all unfold?
Well, we'll all start with the town's perspective, and then I will ask you to fill in the gap after that. My understanding is locally, we have a bylaw that requires two public hearings, the state only requires one. So, in two more weeks, we have another public hearing, so that if anything came up and we had to revise this, we can present the revisions to the, the town again, or if something comes up in two weeks, and someone says, hey, I got a thought, and they present, we can still sit and negotiate with High Hawk Farm about some changes we may want, depending on the input. So, from the town's perspective, there'll be at least two public hearings before we're gonna make any vote on this host community agreement to say, is it correct or not? Once this is executed and we agree, they, High Hawk Farm, have to take the executed host community agreement back to the state and the CCC, and continue their process with the state and that licensing process. And that's where I would ask the High Hawk Farm to answer the rest of the, how the process works.
So, back to the, this is the first big step, is getting a host community agreement. And when you apply for this license through the CCC, you have to fill out that before you get to the next step, to get to the next step, the next step. So, the host community agreement is first step, we get that, then we can move forward with everything else for the CCC license. If we don't get a host community agreement, you know, it's over, it's not, we wasn't worth doing all of that stuff without getting this. Once we get that all submitted, we're gonna have to be working with the planning board and back to the select board to move forward with the requirements that they have, the licensing permitting. And the state is, it's kind of an unknown, it's And the state is, it's kind of an unknown, it's gonna be six months, could be seven months, could be a year. However long it's gonna take the CCC to get through this, so. In a perfect world, we're open to have some plants in the ground come May, the latest of June, but we're, we're at the mercy of the state.
And add to that, that whole circle, it started the select board with host community agreement. Technically, it ends at the select board where they're asking for their license, the local license. Because our local license is our process to say, okay, you went through all of that, and by coming to us with the license, you're actually giving us the date that your business started, so these timelines of fourteen months from, that local license is kind of the dot the i, procity. We verified that the planning board approved, the board of, uh, the building department approved everything. But everybody that has some level of approval in what they're doing has done it. And at that point, we issue a local license, and then technically, they're in business. So it's, it is a full circle process, and as Chris mentioned, after they get through, I think, the select board's host community agreement and the next few steps with CCC, they come back to the planning board and begin the special permit granting process that the planning board has defined in the bylaws. And then some things are running in parallel all the way through that, until they finally get the approval from the state, saying, okay, you've made your commitments. And then they come back to us and say, we're ready to, ready to run.
So with that, having said in detail, thank you for that. How, how, how transparent is all of these actions? Is this, is this on the town website? Can we, can I track that? Can I read up all the documentation as it's unfolding? Any public commentary? There must be a place you could go online and make comments, or is there a blog about this?
No, I'll be honest.
Agreement's online, is it, Andrew?
It is.
No, what I mean is, there's not a blog that's saying, okay, they've taken this step, now they're at this step. We don't have a a website section that is tracking marijuana establishment licensing, or any other type of business licensing.
So why not?
It's the first time I've actually heard anybody ask. I'll, I'll admit, so that's kinda why I.
I think, I think that this, uh, by your own, your own comments, you're asking for questions, you wanted to have input. That's what you said in your, in your opening piece, that you're looking for input, and, uh, you know, I think that's.
We, we do have.
It's being recorded right now.
We do have a mailing address.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, wait, wait.
It's fine. So.
But that's not really specific to what he's asking, he's looking for kinda like calendar update, saying this occurred, here's the next step.
Let's be, let's, let's, let's bring it to the people, why, why not? I mean, like, why not?
Just to really clarify, there are different processes.
Make things a lot easier, let's do it the easy way, let's, uh, do the hard one.
The meetings are all public?
Oh, wait, wait.
You know, but this is different.
But we just gotta still keep to who gets the floor, and we're getting a little too much, everybody jumping in.
Yeah, but that makes it fun. Please leave the, no, I'm just.
This isn't about fun.
What I'm, I'm trying to, and I'm not saying that we can't improve this process. But what I am trying to say is we have my town government where we post these meetings. And if you track each department that's involved, are you?
That's not the question, excuse me.
What, what is the question?
Why don't we have a blog? Why isn't all the information there transparent, so people can lean in, have thoughts, put them out there, let's have a discussion. Let's open the forum. Why are we limiting the forum? What, what, what rules are in the way of that? There is no rule in the way of that, let's do it.
Well, no, no, the, the, if the town set up this blog and forum you're talking about, we would have to pay somebody to manage that whole thing. We would have to hire a new employee, I'm not saying yes or no, but we don't have the manpower to keep up with that when multiple things start coming before us. He's doing his best just to keep up, to make sure we have the laws in front of us, to make sure we don't make stupid decisions. I'm just suggesting, that's part of.
Rather than, rather than, I don't wanna take this over, but rather, rather than have objection to it, I'd like you to embrace the thought.
Oh, don't.
I'd like you, I'd really like you to think about how we could make this happen. This is a, a trackable issue, it's very trackable, you know? Let's, let's make it so that we can do it in an expeditious, democratic way, and hear people's voice. Why have an excuse, why not put this forward before the people? This is what, this is about.
How do you propose to put it before the people? What, what method?
How about a wiki page, open source governance document, and start it off with this as the item?
No, that's why I'm asking.
The template's already there, you don't have to create it. Andrew and I had this conversation this afternoon. You don't have to create that, you just lock into it, and you might have to tweak an algorithm here or there, to sort things the way you want it to sort them. And then have people leaning in. Have the people have a voice. Let it come back to the comments, let it come back to the people, this is all about. You're here representing them, instead of second guessing them and trying to help in public hearings, where, where people can make it, they can't make it. You know, who went through hell with, you know, the planning board trying to do that? People, you know, you, you offer this for, for weeks and weeks, and then no one shows up, and then just when you wanna close the door, somebody says, well, I thought of this. You know, so if you did that, it would preclude that, you'd have, hey, women, you've had all the time in the world to say this. There it is. And you haven't tracked, it's, it's, you, you know.
I understand what you're saying now.
So, it's not about, you know, I mean, a little bit of expense, but the amount, amount of savings is, is monumental.
Just, just to, Neil, I just wanna say.
Maybe these people have offered, these people have just offered, made an offer for a community. Maybe this is the thing that they would, they would offer. Maybe they would finance that, set up that site. I don't know, I'm not saying that, I can't speak for them, it was just an offer I heard here tonight.
I got you. All I wanted to say, Neil, is, I'm sorry, I probably came off as if I was pushing back again, and that's not what I meant. You would ask why we don't, not why we wouldn't. And why we don't is currently, one, we hadn't even heard about, I haven't, until you brought it up. Anybody requesting some type of constant platform, where at any moment someone can make a comment, and that comment can easily now be read by us and any other potential. So, and I, I do appreciate what you're suggesting, and I do think it's something we could do. But because you just brought it up, and it's the first time I heard it, I don't have the solution, I just understand what you're asking, and I was trying to explain why currently we don't, because that's how I understand why we don't now. So I'm not trying to push it down, I didn't mean it that way, if that's how it came off, so I'm sorry if that's how you heard it, because that's not what I meant to say, so I just wanted to clarify what I, where I was coming from.
I haven't got to comment on this yet, I've been waiting, Mr.
You haven't raised your hand?
I asked you to comment.
No, you didn't, you butt in, and I told you to shut up.
I asked you again to comment on this. I'm asking you now, I'd like to comment.
Go right ahead, Greg.
If that's okay with you. My opinion, different than the chairman's, is that we spent a great deal of time establishing the bylaws that we wanted to set forth, inviting numerous occasions, public comment, such as this, which would have been a great time to try to include it prior to the bylaws. As the laws exist, these things are not allowed for. Doesn't mean they can't be changed, but they're not right now. My opinion, the transparency is here, the fact that we have this meeting well publicized, and we'll have another one. And the requirements set forth to meet with the planning board, who has extensive requirements. And the board of building regulations, the building inspector, the fire department, police department, all these avenues have to take place, they're all public. And when it's all comes to an end, and they have their state license to come back here, it'll be public once again. There is ample opportunity over several months coming, to have input to either the company here applying for the license, or the select board. And if you want that comments and questions shared, we can certainly share them on our website. But I think it's an unreasonable time constraint now to try to get into another venture in the middle of this application process. I think it's a great question for future permitting, if we wanna look into this, and perhaps amend a bylaw uh, to include that sort of thing, and that could be proposed at a town meeting, if somebody has something, you know, written in a meaningful way that we could adopt it. But it's not adopted now, and it's just not the time to get into it, I don't think, during this proceeding.
The answer?
Yes, sir.
You know, the time is now. It's always the time now, alright? Because there's always a reason not to, there's always a reason, you know? And this facilitates this discussion, this makes it completely wide open. And, uh, so, I would just, you know.
I, I hear what you're saying.
I don't know why we would need to go to town meeting to say we wanna have more information available to the public. I don't see that you need a bylaw change to go there and say, I wanna make more public, more information public, you know?
The bylaws, um.
No, I don't see that, I just see, let's do it. Let's do it, get it done, and then, and, and enjoy the bounty of it. Not limiting, no more limiting, let's think positive, let's move. Listen, this community is stagnant in the water and dying from attacks and everything else, let's move it forward, let's make positive change. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to propose here. And I still have a question for Ron, if he still wants to.
In just a moment, let, let Greg, uh.
My feeling on attaching it to a bylaw is that, um, the bylaws establish that the town knows what to expect of us, and the applying companies coming in, businesses know what to expect, and what's expected of them. To change that without having a, a rule set up front, I don't think is the, the right way to do it, I'd just like to see the bylaw, to sort of people know what's coming up front, that's all. I like everything, I always like everything clear and upfront, I don't like changes in midstream. I don't like to, um, you know, alter from what, what people expect. Given the fact that, yes, I asked we have these meetings, not two weeks in between them, I wanted the two weeks. And tighten up the two weeks between, because I don't think it's necessary to have two weeks between the two meetings. But that's nonetheless, that's not the way we go, and we go in two weeks between. Generally, everyone seems to know what's expected of them right now, and I, I don't like to mess with that and throw a curveball into it, if you would. That's why I think having it established as a bylaw, um, everybody would understand that the town would say, yes, this is what we want, and it's a chance to say that. And, and then we can amend it in a, in a meaningful way that's, instead of trying to throw something together now, that we're not comfortable familiar with.
Okay, I've heard about it, so.
You had a question for Ron?
This heard, I heard you.
I heard you as well, I appreciate the comments.
So, thank you. How did you come up with doing two acres?
Uh, under the state law, it's a hundred thousand square feet is your maximum, maximum size, so that's as big as the state allows for cultivation.
You expect that to change, or?
They may at some point in time, yeah. So, one hundred thousand is it.
Thank you, that's, just curiosity.
I talked with Mr. Iandoli about that, and he seems to, because I was wondering why they would do larger, and the people he's talked with in the state are concerned that in, in Colorado, they, they overgave out permits, and then they overproduced, um, which took some of the the pricing down on the market, which cut back their taxes, and, and left marijuana that couldn't be sold, which gets handled illegally or fight to destroy. Um, so I think the state intends to approach it, was Dean was indicating, in a slow buildup manner. So we don't oversaturate the market with marijuana, and keep that in, in smaller concise, and also spread it out, not too much power, money in any one place. That, that makes sense if you look at it that way, you can have a lot of these small grows, instead of giving someone a huge chunk, there's, there's a lot of power and money in that if you do that.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I only had one more follow up comment on the, uh, just the, getting the information out there, doing our best to get as much comment as possible. Is, a lot of those things are, are defined by policy, not necessarily bylaw. So, we can introduce policy, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're putting more burden on any of the developers, if it's something that is generally just being posted and received by the town. So we post the documents, people make comments, we receive the comments, and we determine whether we wanna incorporate it in further discussion. Or just share it with the developer, have them come back with a proposal based on the comments they received. So in a way, we, if we could set that up, we're not really adding the burden to the developer, we're adding the burden to. Because everything they submit to us that we discuss in this meeting is public record anyway. So it's not like we're sharing something that's not public record. As a matter of fact, our bylaw pretty much does, put a big sign on your property saying, you're gonna do something here, so it's not like we're revealing something that we hadn't already told the developer we're gonna reveal. Or that doing business with the government, they wouldn't know that it could be revealed. So I do believe, if it's possible, and Andrew mentioned, well, Neil mentioned he had a, a little bit of a discussion with Andrew about. I would like Andrew to look into it and then come back to us in another meeting or so, and just kind of explain what you believe the challenge would be, what we could do to potentially do this. But I know it's gonna take, I don't want you to answer it right now, I really don't, I want you to think about it and then come back to us. Just to see what's feasible, how it can be managed, and the concern, obviously, is any type of place where public comment can be made, you might have ninety percent of vulgar language and ten percent useful comment. And it's just how much time do we go through sifting through all that? And, because, I'm, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying these are factors I think we would have to look into on how we would build the policy to say, alright, this is how we'll do it, this is how we'll share the information, this is how we'll use the information. And so we can create the platform that can consistently be used for this. It's just something we gotta look through, because usually, in that type of case, just like a Facebook page, someone wants to post something on a Facebook page, there's an administrator that says, is that comment valid? If you're swearing, we're not gonna let you post a comment, if it's that type of if it's the type where we have that administrative privilege, where we control the comments, but then you gotta be careful, because now it looks like we might be controlling comments that had a point, but included vulgar, vulgar language, and now are we censoring the discussion? So we gotta be careful how the perception could be with that, that's all. Because we cannot, as a town, set up something and let people just swear on our town website.
Why not? Is there a statute against swearing down?
Honestly, I think as a town, you gotta be careful with the platform you allow, that you have control over, what you allow to be said. You've gotta be careful if you allow libel and slander to occur. It might be libel, because it's written word, but.
But the town.
I'm just saying.
Libel for someone else libeling someone else. If they libel, they're liable.
It depends on how long it sits there, and if we became, if we have been notified.
This is not what this meeting is about, right?
Huh?
I say, I apologize, this is not what this meeting was.
No, 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 I just wanted to, I didn't think there was any more discussion on this, so it was just another thought I had, that I do wanna carry forward with what you asked, and try to find a plan that works.
I committed this afternoon to write a pro forma, I'll do a brief pro forma outline, and, uh, put that before the board, alright?
I really appreciate that, Neil, thank you.
I do another comment on the, the agreement in general.
Yes.
Not that topic, so.
Go ahead.
Part one A, I'd ask that the three percent, say, three percent of sales or the value of the product according to the index, and I don't see that the amendment's been made.
You've amended here what you're saying.
I'd asked in part one A, that under the three percent, he's doing this on purpose. The three percent of gross sales, be amended to gross sales, or the, or three percent of the value of the marijuana produced. It, it just covers us in the future, depending on the rules of the state that could possibly change. You know, somebody transfers marijuana to another site without selling it. You know, if you own two sites, a processing plant, you can transfer it out of town, you haven't sold it, we could lose a tax. But there's other stipulations between valuation, and how they get taxed in the final retail sale, and things that kinda make that not a likely thing to occur now, but it doesn't mean that couldn't change in the future. So I'd request that we amend that to say, three percent of gross sales or value of the marijuana, according to.
Based on market rate for the appropriate index.
Thank you.
So we, we did a little bit of research on this, I did some research on this, to try and determine what if, what is that value, what is that spot price? You can go online and you can Google marijuana spot price. Um, there is some sites out there available, there's one that, uh, seems like the prominent one that comes up first on the Google search list. And you go on to that, and it doesn't have Massachusetts listed on it. May that change, perhaps, but it's not listed right now. Um, I can see some of your concern if we had a retail location outside of town, however, we don't. We're, we're wholesaling to, we don't even know yet who we're gonna sell this to. And with the, the tracking system from seed to sale, I mean, we can't, there's no, I mean, the state knows everything. I mean, the state knows everything, and it's like, where, where does the value come from, and what is that?
I would do this. Revise it to, because the state is tracking all the sales. It would come down to what is the average price per pound that the state has on record for that same period. So, the three percent would be every wholesaler in Massachusetts that sold in the previous year or during that year that you sold. What's that average rate? And we can agree if there's like, the average rate minus a certain percentage or something, because maybe you can't get the best price, and therefore you're selling it, but now you have to pay a higher local impact fee because you're in the bottom ten percent of the, all the people that sell, so you're not really selling it at the average rate. I'm willing to listen to how you would do that, but that would kinda be the, the bar, like you.
But we could say.
Could you, 'cause it would then be state-specific because of our labor costs and all that are different than another state. I recognize you gotta be careful with a, a national index versus a local index.
Because it's three percent or, or that price, instead of saying whichever is greater, just say it's three percent or if transferred, that state rate.
Well, the three percent isn't the thing, it's the value of the gross sale.
I know, but three percent of the value, if they don't pay the, three percent of the sales, what we're asking. If for some reason it's transferred and not sold, then we want three percent of the value, the aggregate value from this thing. As opposed, I was saying before, whichever is greater, I'd just say.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, you're, you're indicating it as an all or nothing. In other words, I'm either gonna sell it, or I'm gonna transfer it. At what point is that lower cost of not selling it at the greatest cost you can sell it for your gross sales that you can do? How much lower do you get before all of a sudden it's just a transfer and they're really trying to get away from the local impact fee versus, that's just the best price they could get? I mean, how do you, you can't define that necessarily in this agreement unless you're.
Our, our business needs may be different than somebody else's business needs. I mean, obviously, we're gonna try to sell it for as much as we can. I mean, that's the idea.
So, I, I hear ya. I'm trying to figure out the right, and so I was thinking some type of reference to that average state sale. Yes, Ralph?
Um, I would, I would make a suggestion if you're trying to come up with the average state sale, that you're doing apples to apples and you're not just doing it by the average pound of cannabis sold, but the average pound of outdoor cannabis sold.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
Oh yeah, that's very different. And well, and also depending what the use is, it would have to be apples for apples. If this is outdoor cannabis for hemp, I mean, for THC extraction versus for, for smokable, there's a very distinct difference in price. You're looking at fifteen hundred, two thousand a pound.
The, the plant versus the processed product, I don't know the difference there either, 'cause now you're have, you'd actually have to get into classifying every plant type and what they're for and.
Well, yeah.
Unless, well, that means we need to pay someone to go through and tell us as a third-party consultant. How are these classified? How do they fit? How, then how can we create our pricing scale? And I don't know if the town thinks that's worth.
No.
Does impact fee back.
Perhaps the wording of, you know, let's say, you know, if IHOP Farm ever started a retail location somewhere outside of Barry, that would be.
But it could even be a production facility that, that is an extraction facility someplace. So if you have an extract, Dean literally has an extraction facility out of this town. He's gonna transfer his marijuana.
Fine, would be, I think we could fine with that too. I mean, if we take anything out of town, that would.
Right, the value would at least.
The value of what.
The value at least town will be for what it is. If it's, if it's sold as smokable, it's gonna have a higher value than sold as THC extraction. That, it's that simple. So you'd use the, the rate, the language he's talked about. And that's gonna be tested, obviously, if it's tested and it qualifies as smokable, then they're not gonna sell it in. The low rate, they're gonna get the good rate for. So, you know, those tests will be available through the state as well, what they're selling it for, what the purpose of it, and that is traceable. So it's not like they can say, oh, we're, we're selling it for THC extraction, and then turn around and sell it to a, a place to be smoked, 'cause that's all traced by the state as well.
So we just gotta put the wording in correctly where we speak to the average.
Yes.
According to its classified product. Which allows us at the time to sit at the table and say, okay, you sold what type? That fits what classification? What is the state average?
State average and that classification.
That would be a live number. Like, how do we know, alright, we're gonna try to sell it for, you know, whatever that is. We're trying to sell, we don't know what the state average is, 'cause that's not gonna be a live number.
The objective.
A month down the road, the state releases what that number was, and then, you know, were we higher or lower than that?
I guess the question is, is that something that the state is constantly updating on a monthly, every six months, or once a year? And if that's the case, we're gonna have to go back to the last time they presented the data, and that's the average you're looking at. So if it was a year ago, that's the average you might have to pay attention to.
Within, a margin within the state, like you said, allowing deviation, we could say within fifteen percent of the state value, assuming that, I don't think the sale prices.
No, I'm just trying to, like he said, how do they know when that state develops that number? Well, it's the last time they actually publicly said, we audited, here's the number. That's the number you can go to. You can't wait for them in three months to come up with the number for the year that you did it in, and that's not uncommon.
I think you.
You just go to the last documented, confirmed date that they posted the information.
The payment is fourteen months out, so it's, it's a full year sometime the production occurs. And the production is not necessarily that we get our tax, um, our payment months after the production, it may be six months after production. And the state may already know what those numbers are at that point. So we, we don't even know yet how we're gonna tie it together, but the language, I think, can certainly tie to the state, but we don't know exactly.
Yeah, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't know that when we're trying to sell it.
No, well, selling it would be three percent, and if there's a deviation.
Sell it for as much as I can get, and if my buyer's gonna pay me X amount of money, and let's say a guy in Sheffield that's got the other outdoor grow facility sold it for way more than me, and I didn't know who the buyer is that he's selling it to. And now here we are, four months later, and you're like, oh, the town, oh, the town buried X amount of dollars because you didn't sell it as high as the guy in Sheffield.
Well, no, that's why I'm also talking about the average. That way that one guy can't send you through the roof.
Well, he's, there's only one outdoor grow facility in Massachusetts right now. I mean, granted, well, there's gonna be more, but.
You're the third outdoor grower technically that has come to this town. So you should almost be the last one to start growing. So there should be at least three by the time that happens. But I hear ya. I hear ya, and it just gonna, gonna come down to, I'm willing for you to review this and come back to us with what you think is a good reference point. But we still need to have some type of reference to say that. 'Cause what we're trying, personally, what I believe, Greg, myself, we're trying to create a standard precedent clause that we want every HCA to have, that's gonna have this language. So it's not special to you, it's not special to anybody else, no matter what type of business they're coming to, it's, yeah, yeah, we know you can manipulate your accounting, so we wanna make sure that, assuming you try to do that to avoid the taxes, we can go to some other standard that says, well, the value of that really was this, and you're coming in thirty percent below.
I was really just trying to.
That was what was brought up, and that's why we're talking like this.
I think it's getting way overcomplicated, you know, the reality of, you've got two outdoor grows that have been approved that didn't have that verbiage in it. The language is tough. I don't think anybody in this room would agree upon what language, 'cause we all have a different opinion of what the language is, and the first two, you don't have that. So now you've got something special in a third, you know, which becomes, well, why was it done this time, and I see the.
Learning lesson.
Why, but the learning lesson becomes a, a condition that begins to become.
It's too convoluted the way we're talking about.
Too convoluted, it's too what-if, it's, it's kind of a what-if, it's a bad-case scenario, I guess, that maybe could happen, you know, but.
Right.
The reality of how and when and could it is more in the, in the verbiage and the stipulation of being allowed under the license and the seed to sale. And the understanding that anybody's in business wants to get all they can for the product. And there's nobody else to sell it to except a buyer for our wholesale products, so the price is the price of the retail sale. The what-ifs are too, too unregulated.
Protect against the transfer.
Yeah, so that, that, wait, wait, I'm not done. The transfer part of that is gonna be a different license regulation, come back through the board. Because now if we did get to that point of having a different or additional licenses, we would be looking for a retail or a manufactured. And then maybe, maybe then that comes into play. I don't see the value of the reason anywhere as.
How about?
That, that, that it should be in this.
I have a solution.
Okay.
Play wholesale only.
What do you mean?
Does this is a contract to grow in wholesale only?
That doesn't change anything. They can sell it for a dollar, meets wholesale. The point is, what do you sell it for, and if you're selling it to yourself at twenty percent of what, and I'm not using you guys, 'cause you don't have, but if Iandoli decided to sell to himself in Framingham.
For a dollar.
For a dollar, it's not a transfer now, it's still wholesale, but he's doing it at point zero 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 three cents per pound.
But he did explain to you the reasons why that would not happen in the retail.
But he also explained the potential state law that's gonna change that, and it doesn't protect the town anymore because it does work around the loophole that, or creates the loophole that someone could use. So I'm not necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying that you're wrong about, this is a difficult thing to word as a regulation. And to find the appropriate comparable standard out there, that currently really doesn't exist. The best we can do is try to look at the state's records and use those records to create some value we could understand. Maybe what it is, is you go to that average and you have to pay a minimum of eighty percent of that average. If you're not doing that, you're not gonna be a business very long anyway. I'm sorry, but.
And I don't think we can find any, any copies or any license that gives us some input to this scenario. So we're out on an island here trying to.
Well, it went back to what Ralph said, you know, what is, you know, our strain of marijuana may not be worth what the other guy's strain of marijuana is. You know, it could be, so it's like, who, how do you establish what ours is worth versus somebody else? This is a bit simple.
Do you have more to add to that?
Uh, yeah, just to throw another monkey wrench into the whole situation.
Thank you.
If, if IHOP is paying based on the average, um, and it comes back that they actually overpaid, is the town gonna be owing them credit?
What do you mean they overpaid?
So, I mean, we, you guys were discussing the fact that, uh, Chris had mentioned, okay, so let's say we pay X, and then it comes back. And then it was actually you underpaid, so now IHOP is responsible to pay more to the town. So if it were, I mean, 'cause you're trying to come up with a verbiage, right? So I just want whoever's coming up with the verbiage to think about it on the flip side. That if for some reason they find a buyer who's paying premium, and nobody else can find this guy because they're locked in with IHOP. And then, um, they sold their price point super high, the average comes back and is way low, is the town gonna reimburse IHOP for the overpayment? Just, I'm just throwing this out there because you're talking about.
My original comment was.
If they're gonna underpay and that.
And I understand your point. As a matter of fact, because of your point, I see it in the reverse. And what I mean by that is, I don't think we can put that in, Greg. We cannot put in that protection of what if somebody intentionally tries to create a loophole to get out from paying Barry their three percent value. And the reason I don't think we can is because the state, we would lose because we are only allowed to get three percent of the gross sales, not the gross sales as defined by the local community.
Right.
So I don't think we can do that, because they maximum, the maximum is three percent of the gross sales. We can't say three percent of the gross sales or the value in case you try to mess with us. Because now if we create an arbitrary higher value than their actual gross sales, I think we would lose a court case with this host community agreement. Or for all I know, CCC will review it, and then kick it back to both of us and say, rewrite that, we're not even gonna let them take the next step.
That's what I see.
So I, right now at the point, I think it's, until we get more legal counsel, I wouldn't even suggest putting it in.
Last solution I said was, is stipulated in the agreement that it, it must be wholesale, that it can't be transferred. Or, you know, transferred at a discount. It's gonna be wholesale at the, at the, you know, the market price that they get. That's all. That, that's a simple stipulation. It doesn't stop Dean from selling to himself for the buck, except if he said market price. He can't sell to himself for a dollar, it's not market price. He'd have to do a reasonable number on it. So that doesn't set a number, it doesn't set a specific, but it says market price, so if it's selling for two thousand dollars a pound, or fifteen thousand doll, uh, hundred, probably fifteen, or doing two thousand a pound, ten bucks a pound is not market price or any place close to it. I think to say that it must be wholesale and can't, can't be transferred or discounted.
Does that mean you're going back to the host agreements that have been signed to change them for Dean? Is that what you're saying, or?
I can't change Dean's.
Well, you keep bringing up.
Weekend reg.
I'm saying, I'm saying, that's, that's, that's just because, what, what happened, what happened is, once we realized Dean owns a, a grow, a process and a sell, he said, oh wow, someone could really dodge these. Dodge, dodge taxes by doing that. However, the way the state laws are written, Nick, Dean said, they're getting taxed on the sale price, less their cost of what they paid for. And the sale tax is fifteen percent. Right, there's this fifteen percent whack there, so they'd rather pay high on the, on the gross retail end. So that, that takes off their final sale end, you know, but if that law changes, then yeah, they could just cut out one tax altogether and just pay tax in the final.
No, unlikely that law will change it.
Well, I don't know, that's about the problem.
What I really.
Change the laws regularly.
What I really think, Greg, to resolve this properly, what we need to do as a town is we need to submit something to the CCC to express our concerns so that they create the regulations that prevent business-to-business that undercuts this three percent impact fee effort that they wrote in. And they can come up with it. Maybe they'll come up and create this market standard to say, or maybe they'll do a, okay, you do this, but the town has within two years to review your sale versus whatever the market ended up being based on tabulations and audits and actually verifying what got sold at that period. And if you are far enough below in a percentage, there may be something you have to present to prove why. You know, it could be, you just had to accept the sale because you're the last one that year, everybody bought out, and you just need to present the argument to show, or just present the fact that you didn't sell it to any business that you have a, a business interest in. You know, that might be the simple thing is.
Yeah, yeah, it could be.
But it's gotta, I think it's gotta come from the state down. I don't think we can impose it in our host community agreement and not necessarily be countering the CCC's requirement about the three percent. 'Cause it just says gross sales.
With the stipulations, say, they will operate, they seek to operate a cultivation facility for the purpose of outdoor greenhouse cultivation, harvesting, carrying, drying, and wholesale distribution. I see no harm in putting a clause in there that should, that they shall sell it wholesale and we, and, you know, contribute three percent of that proceeds.
That may be the case, but I'll be honest, I don't know enough about that terminology to say it's any different than transfer. Wholesale is a process. They negotiate their prices, they figure it out. Transfer is just another word. From my perspective, 'cause I, I'm admitting, go ahead Neil.
Market arbitrage.
Arbitrage.
That's what, that's what you're looking for.
And that's that concept of looking at the market, coming up with a fair value that.
The market will bear.
Again.
As much as I wanna put that in, I agree if the state says three percent.
I mean, Greg, myself, Dylan, I think what we should do at this point is, we'll take it under consideration. We, I would ask that you guys also continue to consider, to see if you can come up with better wording or concept, because I would not consider this a, a done issue, but it's something that we still need to reflect on as well and do our own research to find out. Maybe it is worth us also, or you guys also reaching out to the CCC, we can try to figure out if they think they already have things that protect the local communities.
Tell us why.
From this, and then they can just point us to, yeah, here and here is how we protected you from that. And then when we read it, maybe, or we have a, an attorney that we say, hey, could you tell us how this law should or shouldn't? So, um, from my perspective, I think we've had a really good discussion, but we're not gonna come to an answer tonight. So we should all kinda take the information, sit back on it, think about it, and we can try to revisit this at the next meeting. Or if we can, we'll get some information to you prior to then, so we can all be a little bit more prepared at the next meeting.
It's not an attempt to get the highest possible number from you guys, saying, oh, well, I should have sold for more. It's just making sure that anyone in the future, because I'm assuming these will continue here. If these go well, that I'm thinking the planning board may open up more grows and we may have more of these in the future, depending how these go. And if we do, we need to, this is one of the things that I see as a just possible hiccup, just protecting the town. Who knows? Just, if we can work it out, that it's good for everyone. But it's not to try to say, I know you sold it for fifteen hundred bucks a pound, and we think you could have got sixteen hundred. That's not the intent of this. Not the intent at all. We think it should be sold for fifteen hundred, you sold for twenty bucks a pound. What's going on here? That's what I'm worried about. Not that you guys are, but anybody could in the future. You know, and say you sold it in the future and we approved a transfer of ownership. We don't know what the next people could do. We, you just, there's gotta be some protection. Doesn't, doesn't help me any, doesn't help him any, but it helps the town, which helps all of us.
I think the importance of looking at it as the broader, bigger picture is important, either you see he has some input or somebody, you know, bigger than us has some input, because.
I don't think I'm frightened of thought of this.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, maybe not be the only one, so.
I would doubt.
What have been some of the answers beyond that that we just are missing? Because if you look at some of that, you know, US Attorney Worcester County probe that hit the news last week. You know, they seem to be more specific on what's so different about particular host community agreements and you know, we don't wanna be one that's, why is this so different?
Right. And I do know that other cities have larger budgets for legal support, cities and towns.
Yeah.
And looking at a few of their host community agreements, we may find that they already have clauses that speak to this, and we can see what their language says.
Yeah.
And it may just, maybe it got through, maybe it just hasn't been, you know, appealed yet. And then one day when they go to enact it, all of a sudden, the developer says, hey, wait, and then it goes through case law, and then we find out that it still isn't acceptable, and we're back to the three percent of whatever you sold it at. I just want to avoid anything that might get to case law, because that's just everybody wasting money.
Yeah.
So. Um, so yeah. So let's, any further questions, thoughts, comments before we close the meeting?
I would like to support Ron. He's got something up in there. Does that mean that our agreement, their agreement is gonna be different than previous agreements? And if you change the agreements because you become more experienced in learning what a good agreement is, that's just opening the town to some serious litigation. Wasting a lot of money, maybe, maybe whatever agreement has been established initially should be followed through with, unless we're prepared for some heavy duty litigation. That's what.
I have a response to you.
From my perspective.
The host community agreement was presented to local communities, so they have the ability to subjectively negotiate with each person based on the site, the location, and the potential impact to the community. So they can vary. The reason CPC has something, they had to register with the Registry of Deeds saying they won't do this for the life of this parcel is because there were no bylaws in place. So we had to put more regulations on them about, no, you will not come back and request to be a retail site, and you're gonna register that with the Registry of Deeds. You can't just start doing that until you clear that off the Registry of Deeds. That's what we wrote in their host community agreement. Because it was the only way we could make sure that it didn't get changed with transfer of ownership or transfer of board of selectmen or things like that. And we felt it was important that if we were gonna accept it, a future board that may have a completely different position on it couldn't renegotiate the host community agreement or allow them to do retail, because the host community agreement at that time, I don't think even when it initially came before the board, it wasn't under the CCC, it was actually under the medical marijuana, the RMD regulations under the Department of Public Health. So to get that license meant they had the right by the state to be cultivator, processor, retailer, all on one site. It was a blanket license at the time.
No restrictions.
So if we gave it to them and they said, oh, we'll just be a cultivator. And then they got the state license, they're like, and then we're gonna put on a processing plan and a retail site and all they were doing at that point, until any bylaws passed, was whatever they were allowed as of right, and we had no control over it, and the the public comment at the time is they did not want to retail on that site. The only way we could ensure that didn't occur was with registering in the at, on their deed that they wouldn't do a retail site. So that's why that's different than this one. We have bylaws in place, so we didn't put quite as many clauses in there that we thought we needed to do to protect the town. Some of them are repetitive that are written in the bylaw anyway, but also in the host community agreement and various security reference, I mean, from the host community agreement to the local bylaws to the state laws, I'm sure they read the same clause four times in some of these things. It's yes, you're, you can't do it unless you do this type of security, or you can't do it unless you do this type of notification. But that's why they vary, Sam, is because the state actually allowed it to vary and they expected it to vary, so that's why I'm not worried about litigation, because this doesn't look like Dean's, it doesn't look like Castle Rock Industries. And it probably won't look like any future ones that come before us. Because we're gonna see it differently, you know, they might be in a whole different part of town where all of a sudden, they can fit right into the, you can't see it from public because they have a lot of trees and berms built. But it's smack dab. And we're gonna ask them to do something different, because we have a concern about how it might blow two thousand feet over into the schoolyard, just because of the wind. There's no bylaw saying they can't be two thousand feet from a school, but it might be an elevation and I'm just saying, those are things for us to consider depending on who's asking and where. Same as the planning board would consider, if it got through us and the planning board's still concerned about something that we missed, they'll raise those concerns. But that's even after, they have to worry about litigation. Because their special permit granting authority still has to kind of work through a certain jurisprudence and precedent setting process where they gotta be careful if they tell one you can, and then the next one, and they can't clearly define how it's different, but they ask for more. They gotta be careful, I think, because I think zoning is a little bit harder to do that.
First kid versus third kid in the family, treated very differently.
Yep.
So that was my answer to you. That's why I think it can vary a little bit more than some of your standard responses to people that come.
Get to it a lot quicker here, more comfortable, but then you learn a longer way. Same as the kids.
Unless there's no more, I would see if there's a request to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate the time. Oh, look, we hooked him. He's about to take down the one TV that's still working.